I'm gonna get this meeting started at six o'clock. Uh, February twenty second, uh, twenty twenty four. And I'm calling this meeting to order. So first order is need to look at the minutes from our last meeting of January, on January eleventh. And just to approve those.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for January eleventh.
Alright, listen all.
He can't, he can't.
Alright, then let's vote on it, all in favor? Alright, so moving on to the business, we have two topics, two things on the table tonight. We'll cover the first one. The outdoor comfort center amendment. Ernest M. Fitz. Alright, um, so it was site plan amendment application. So would you like to address planning board and tell us what you got going on?
Sure, okay, alright, let's hear it. So we're now at six seventy-four being treated after the sunroom screen room is outside the building. Uh, it's just about six acres, um, there that we have now. Road front of John twenty-six, also road front of John, uh, Rollerink Road. And, uh, we're just looking to expand, um, uh, footprint a little bit. Just, I literally just needed more for inventory than, uh, and per, uh, the, the other plan is the other half of the building, just, uh, personal storage at the moment. I don't have any plans at the moment, I guess you never have too much space, right? So, uh, but that's really, literally the purpose of it. And, uh, yeah, the steel structure building, uh, the, yeah?
So it's, what's your current business right now, or on the? Is this ever improving?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Well, what's your current business operating now?
So we build manufactured sunrooms and screen rooms? Yeah.
I know it's not on here, but the picture you get, I'm assuming how much, I'm sure, assuming there's plenty of land beside the, the edge of the building, Rollerink Road?
Yeah.
It obviously doesn't say it, I'm assuming it's.
Yeah, th- there is, there's quite a bit there. Um, the, the only thing that I just need to get into a little bit more detail, obviously, is, um, obviously the setback from the road, which I'll probably be beyond that anyway. But I don't wanna push it too far south of the property that I always, always try and look ahead a little bit, that if for some reason, whatever, ten years down the road or something, I need to sell this building, it doesn't interfere my current building. But, so, I do wanna kinda keep it towards Rollerink Road, but I have no desire to put it right to the actual footage of whatever the setback is.
And I would just be as long as it's beyond the setback, that was, that was.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a high balance because I'm gonna keep some inventory here and operate out of this, so I don't really want it too far away. But I don't want it, so.
Yeah.
Probably you have to go to get it.
That's right.
Yeah, so it's, it's two, it's one building, but two great big rooms, both having a bathroom. So it could be, you could operate another business out of there, or you can rent it out, or?
Yeah, right. Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And they have, and they have all the, yeah, and that's, that's all up to code rate, uh, pieces and whatever they're, they're presenting here.
Yep, it is. The, I think the only, the only thing that you're not seeing right now is setbacks from, from the road, but he, I did talk with the applicant. They do have plenty of setbacks from the road, and they're gonna actually plan to set it up so that, uh, there will never be any setbacks if they decide to separate it. So that, that won't be an issue. It looks like it's right on the road, if you're looking at the diagrams, but that's, it's not gonna be an issue. And, um, I'll take care of any building concerns or anything like that on the building plan issue.
So we're just here to approve because it's.
It's over twenty-five percent.
It's over twenty-five percent. So explain that to me again, it's over twenty-five percent of?
So it's twenty-five percent of the entire square foot of the existing structures. He's got quite a large footprint already. We did some math, I think, last year, and, and that's what.
Is that one to the acreage of the land?
It's, it's the structural foot, the footprint itself.
Okay.
And so we did the calculation, and I think it was, uh, certainly into that. And so, yeah, and because he's gonna be using it for commercial, it triggers that, that part of the, uh, amending, requiring it to be amending the site plan.
I make a motion to accept the site plan as written.
Alright, uh, is that gonna, like, all in favor?
Uh, one, one thing before we vote, can we get, can we get a clarification on the estimated date of construction start and then estimated date of completion, just for the record?
Well, I'd like to get started as soon as possible, um, and I would hope that within twelve months this will be done, but hopefully it doesn't take that long.
Alright, so I'll just cross out the two thousand twenty-three information and say ASAP for start, and then within a year?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Alright, so all in favor?
Good catch, Kingston.
Alright, and here's this, oh, you still got his hand.
No.
I'm here for entertainment, it's okay.
I don't know why my camera's not working. My camera's not working.
Pass it down.
Come back.
I'll have to check if she can, if he's here, so if that's all we have, and it's already, it's not even letting me select it.
Alright, so order of business, uh, the first order of business is done.
Yeah, I'll catch up with you guys, um, unless you wanna stick around for the next application. Yeah, we'll catch up, uh, on that one tomorrow.
Thank you.
Alright, so second order of business, the Robinson Mill project, today, King Street. And, uh, so now that the subdivision is a, a couple of items, site plan subdivision, and then the plan to deal forward to. It went to the deal forward and now it's come back to us, so. Um, I'd like to, uh, suggest we have public comment first, do I need to actually vote on them?
I think, I think you can just decide that, and just a little bit, show the range from where it is on the agenda to push it, just in light of having audience members.
Yeah, so let's, uh, start off with public comment. Uh, first of all, my audience, this is Steve.
Steve Bushy, Goro Palmer, representing the Caleb Foundation, who have acquired the Robinson Mill site, and are looking to, uh, redevelop it into seventy-seven units of, uh, senior housing, affordable housing, complex. So the overall project, for benefit of the public here, involves retaining some part of the building here in a U-shaped form. That's kind of warehouse today, old, certainly. There would be thirty units there. But the real gem of the project is the original historic buildings that go back to this building here, eighteen sixty-five, and then eighteen ninety or so. And within those spaces, those are the multi-story buildings, you don't really see them all that well today because the buildings are out in front of them. But, uh, once this would all be demolished, those would all of a sudden pop back out, and we'd have forty-five units of apartments in there. And then there's a boilerhouse building, which I apologize, I should have read, outlined and read here, that too is a historic structure because of its age. There'd be two more units there under the current planning, so.
So all, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Sure.
So all the rest is going to be demolished?
Correct.
So the big square that's dotted out further down King Street? Down below the bottom?
Or, yeah, yep.
Okay.
These building would all come down as well, so I'll show you the site plan. But I wanted to give you some orientation as to the building and the, those building pieces that would be coming down. Here's the site plan, per se, so maybe I'll just show this one, it'll ease you here. So, uh, King Street, existing parking lot, all pavement, existing building, the Marina to the south side of it. So here's the U-shaped building. Gonna demo the bit of it here on the interior, column lines more or less fall along this inside. It's an interior space today that needs to have a new foundation put underneath, but obviously to make it an exterior wall. But then there would be units built within here, be a double-loaded corridor, hallway down the middle with units off on each side. All of these units vary in size from five hundred square feet to seven hundred and fifty square feet and so forth. And again, they're all affordable. Caleb Foundation and the owner, or, uh, their representative Suzanne is online here tonight, and she may be available to answer questions, uh, if need be. But they are, uh, an affordable housing developer out of Massachusetts, they have pretty strong presence here in Maine, as well as, uh, other states here in New England. Uh, and that's their bread and butter, is affordable housing. This project is gonna be seeking support, financing-wise, from a number of different sources, including, starting with main state housing. And we're going through this process in, at this timeframe right now, to be able to, uh, put in applications to main state housing. It's a competitive process, there's all sorts of other developers out there, everybody has to put in their application, uh, to seek that financing support with main state housing. And, uh, we're trying to get our position in line here to get that. But because of the historic nature of the development in the two mill buildings, historic tax credits are also out there for, uh, an opportunity for financing. Uh, brown, what we call brownfields financing, i.e. cleanup money. It's an old mill building, it's not bad, but it is an old building, there's lead and asbestos and, uh, assorted other things that need to get cleaned up, which will happen. Those monies can be leveraged. So, um, the developers also been talking with the community here in the form of, uh, a tax increment financing support as well. So all those things go into the ability to take what is a very expensive project. So, um, we had appeared before the board back in January, and they saw a full application. Because of the zoning language here in this community, we had to seek a, an appeal to the Board of Appeals. And that was because of, of one particular provision in your code, which says you have to have a minimum area of four thousand square feet per unit. So we have four point six seven acres, you divide that through, technically under your code, only fifty units could be built on the property. The Board of Appeals heard our appeal, uh, last week, they made our case, uh, for that, and we're proposing, we gotta prove for eighty. And what we did in that, just to kind of give it a, a brief discussion, our plan currently has seventy-seven, but we haven't completed final designs. And we don't know, uh, there could be a few adjustments because of mechanical space, otherwise. The building space that will be redeveloped is unchanged, we just don't know if it'll be seventy-seven. We said, well, why don't we just go up to eighty, because we don't quite know how we're gonna fit all the units in this space until we get to final design. The Board of Appeals was okay with that. Uh, that reduces the minimum lot area to two thousand five hundred and forty-four and change square feet per unit on this lot. So that's how we've, uh, they granted us that approval, and with that, we've now come back before you folks in hopes and in requesting a site plan approval and an amended subdivision plan approval. This piece of property is part of a bigger piece, and I have the, here's the amended subdivision, per se. A number of years ago, the planning board, uh, heard and approved what was a very small, uh, subdivision, basically single-family homes off of this Robinson Way in five houses that are out there. Part of the property here was just simply identified on that previous subdivision plan as future development. The previous landowner had at one point in time, got an approval to do, I think it was six units, he extended some condos in the building. There's a park in the building and so forth. That didn't happen, uh, for any number of other reasons. We're only proposing apartment units, no parking in the building, as I've shown here on the, we're gonna have an outside parking lot within, uh, the yard area. Once the building's come down, we can, we can figure those sorts of things, provide parking, we'll have ninety parking spaces of what we're proposing, so there should be ample parking, uh, for the tenants here. But that is part of your approval, twofold site plan approval and then the amended, this will be the fifth amended subdivision. There were previously four plans, they were all kind of the same, but there were tweaks to every one of them in that process, I think the previous owner went through. Couple, two or three years of, oh, well, how to tweak this, how to tweak that, but other than the houses, nothing ever really happened. So hopefully that's enough of a background for everybody that's here, if you'd like to talk and for the board. Uh, can offer more?
Yeah, um, any comment, public comment?
I'd like to ask if the planning board plans on having a public hearing on this project. I am requesting that you do have a public hearing. My name is Sharon Jackson. I live at three 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 King Street. I don't approve this project as, as planned the way it is. The primary reason is, I'm sure you all know exactly where that location is, living here. Um, it's right on a corner. Now I hear eighty units, seventy-seven was bad enough. That is right in the middle of the village. Anybody that lives on King Street knows the amount of traffic on King Street. It is the route that'll take you to Thompson Lake, Cogan Pond, and Whitney Pond. I live on the corner of, uh, Pismo Beach Road and King Street. Again, tremendous amount of traffic, a lot of kids have always lived on that road in the forty years I've lived there, and they still live there. For ninety parking spaces to be available for a, uh, complex that has eighty units, in my opinion, is unacceptable. Number one, if a couple live in a unit, and each of them have a car, that's two parking spaces. When they came to the selectmen's meeting, the Caleb group said that in their experience, not everyone has a vehicle. So those tenants who didn't have a vehicle, that would be, um, for somebody that had two, they could have that. So then the questions were asked, well, do they have company coming? So I don't want King Street to be a parking space with cars parked on both sides of the streets, because there's not enough parking. I'm not saying the parking lot's going to be full twenty-four seven, but the parking lot, if it's full, and King Street becomes a parking lot for cars on both sides of the street, that's not a safe place to be in that corner. Anybody that tra- travels that every single day, that, that's not a very good corner to come around, and there, actually, there is a lot of speeding there. It's, it's not something that, you know, you're putting, if you have eighty units, you're putting eighty extra people in that small village area. That, those eighty extra people are going to impact the number of people that go to the bid, uh, beach, the number of people that are walking out in the community. Um, I just see there's too much of congestion there. I also know that if somebody passes, um, all of the guidelines that you have to approve it. But I'm requesting that you consider having a public hearing so that the neighborhood can come and tell this group what our concerns are. I've lived there over forty years, my husband's lived on that street, he's seventy-eight, he was born here. Um, I just think that there is too much going on that street, and for now, for them to even think, and I know all about the appeals. You had to get a hardship ruling. I find it very hard to believe that they met the requirements. I read the, I read the, the decision, but I also know all about the hardship requirements, too. If you create your own hardship, you don't qualify for a hardship. And this group knew that our zoning ordinance, they could only have fifty units, yet they still came forward. So I don't have any sympathy, but I'm a little bit upset to think that the appeals board did grant the, this appeal, and I think it could be challenged by law. But I am requesting that you have a public hearing so the people in the neighborhood can hear all about this, so that they know what to expect.
Can I, this is Suzanne, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Suzanne.
Hi Suzanne.
Hi, um, so I'm, uh, I'm a given, I'm the representative for the Caleb Foundation, I'm the main estate, um, director. So just a couple of comments, um, we intend to stick to seventy-seven units. The only reason we asked for little room is in the event that the plans change a little bit, and the one bedroom might turn into a studio. But we, we don't intend to, uh, go up to eighty, so it's just for a cushion, just in case something happens. Second, on the parking lot question, um, we did add a few spots, and, um, statistically speaking, looking at the properties that we have in our portfolio, um, when we looked at all the one bedrooms in the senior developments that we have, only six percent of the one bedrooms have more than one occupant. So that means that for seventy-seven units, you'd be looking at eighty-three people, and not everyone has a car. So those are the statistics that we have in hand. So if you were to go with, I mean. I think you, I think your mic. Yeah. Yeah, I'll put myself on mute if I mistake. So if you were to go with fifty units and housing, you know, you might have two or three people in there, so that would turn into a hundred and fifty people. Versus, we're proposing fifty-one bedrooms, where the occupancy is probably just gonna be one person per unit. So that's just some data. And if parking proves to be an issue in the future, we'll consider that and probably, um, remediate that. But, um, for now, we actually increased it by ten spots from the lead.
Okay.
I'm June Moser, I also live on King Street, um, pretty much echoing Sharon's concerns. But you, you triggered a new question, so if you don't get approved for seventy-seven, and you only get approved for fifty, are you implying they will be larger than one bedrooms if you only can put in fifty?
No, so, um, it just proves to be not financially feasible. We need to have a seventy-seven in order to, to proceed.
Okay, um, yes, so same concern, um, with, with that area. I'm, I'm also requesting that the planning board, um, hold a public hearing before making your decision on whether you will approve this amendment um, and give the neighbors an opportunity, because a lot of people in the town don't know, the only reason we know is, my husband's on the planning board, she's a selectman. So we kind of know more of what's going on in town, but the neighbors don't. And so, um, that would be my request there, and then also, yeah, the numbers are, are concerning. And again, I would echo that when the Caleb group decided to purchase the property, they knew that the zoning would be for fifty apartments, and they took that gamble that they would get the approval. They are also requesting a very large TIF, at least that was in the first meeting that was mentioned. Now, I don't know that they will be able to get this town to approve the TIF that they are asking for, which is a large tax benefit of, oh gosh, I can't remember, it was something like thirty-five thousand dollars, or is it, is it matter?
Seventy-five thousand dollars over thirty years reduced off their tax, seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent.
Of their taxes reduced over a thirty-year.
Over a thirty-year lock, so, so again, um, and I'm totally not comfortable with, we're gonna do the parking and we'll remediate it later, absolutely not. I don't think we can go into it and agree on, we'll change things later if it doesn't work out. So I just think there's, I, I would love to see the project, I'm not against the project, I'm against the size of the project.
So just a couple of comments on the TIF, um, nothing's been decided, we're still in discussions. Um, so, um, the date of decided is, is not, it's not up to here anymore. So I would just pull that off the table, because we have, I would reach an agreement, we only know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, and for the record, I'll, I'll remind the planning board, we're not here discussing the, uh, appeal, that's a finalized decision that the appeals board made, nor are we discussing the TIF. This is simply hearing the project as it is, as it stands currently.
Alright, so.
When did they purchase this property?
Uh, it should be, it should be in the packet. The bigger, the bigger packet. Yeah, the deed is, uh. Yeah, there's a lot, hold on, I'll, I'll direct you right to it. Should be, um, attachment C, page sixteen.
No better than.
Thank you.
So what, actually, one more, uh, comment, um, regarding traffic, the traffic really proves to be a concern. Uh, we can hire a traffic consultant to perform a traffic study.
And I believe the planning board. And I believe the planning board can, can request that.
I would like to.
Her question, is the planning board allowed to, um, make the determination that there can be no parking on King Street if the project is approved?
I think, I think they don't have plans to have off-street parking, it's not part of the, the parking count, if I'm correct, Steve, so it's all off-street parking currently. Whether or not someone chooses to or chooses not to, uh. If, if the board wants to put that as a condition, I'm sure we could explore and see if they have the authority to do that. I, right off the top of my head, I don't believe they, they can, uh, not say that, but it's, it's always an option.
Can I have a follow-up? Can the planning board require less number of units than they're proposing?
Theoretically, uh, usually an applicant would want to, if, if they're proposing a certain number, because it, it, it's going to either, uh, shoot the project out of the air from the, from the start, I would say they probably wouldn't wanna go under that, and the applicant has proposed seventy-seven is that number. So if what you're saying is you, you would like to see the board meet back down to the fifty, I think that would fly in the face of the appeals board decision, uh, that was granted to them. It, it's kind of counterintuitive in that sense.
If it might help, uh, and Suzanne may wanna weigh in a little bit, but with respect to the seventy-seven and what's driving that number, there's cost, basically, when it all boils down to it, and. Uh, the issue at hand is the cost to redevelop here and, uh, broken down into a number of different categories. All the soft costs, which are all the upfront costs, acquisition of land and so forth, and in fact. Here's just a, a brief summary that this number here, three point one nine million dollars, is just an upfront soft cost that is a number that is more or less a fixed cost starting already, uh, regardless of how many units get done on the property. Then the demolition cost and construction piece of it all also has a, a certain cost. One aspect of the redevelopment has to be the historic buildings, because the historic buildings, without those, there's no historic tax credits. The U-shaped building doesn't get any historic tax credits, uh, so it doesn't qualify for much. But what's the driver is breaking all of those costs down, if you have to tear down the majority of the building, uh, anyway. You put that into the unit-driven price that these and the redevelopment will take for these units. We've looked at, if there was just only fifty units, the unit price then would exceed the main state housing cap number by, and Suzanne knows what the percentage is, it's a very high percentage, I wanna say thirty or forty percent, higher than what main state housing would even support. They would basically say, yep, no, it's not, can't do it. So basically you have to get, alright, we need more units to get that cap number down on a per-unit basis to something that is supportable by main state housing. And that's how you arrive at basically the seventy-seven units. Might they have gone for more? Well, there obviously was a lot more building space there that could have otherwise supported even more units. But I think they arrived at the seventy-seven because that got them to a comfort zone, uh, for what they were willing to take on. for what they were willing to take on and to build at this particular property. Suzanne can probably speak as well to the Caleb Foundation, and they're a nonprofit organization, so I know maybe that points out, well, you know, it's all about the money and profit and so forth. Well, they're nonprofit, they're just trying to build housing at the end of the day. And you got to do it in a reasonably economic, economical, supportable fashion, and that's how they've arrived at that number. So that's kind of trying to lay it out in layman's terms and understanding it is a change certainly. I think to Suzanne's point, they're just single-bedroom senior housing. To the question of traffic, we've offered some degree of information in our application materials. Generally speaking, and I can speak to this, I've been in the business for thirty-five years. We have traffic people in our office, we do do traffic studies, and if the board were seeking more input, we would certainly offer and provide that. But speaking as I have some degree of experience as a civil engineer and having done all these projects, senior housing projects, the traffic generation is hardly anything. It might be ten, fifteen trips in the course of what we call that peak out in the morning, remembering that most of these people aren't working, so they're not pushing traffic. They don't go on the roads during when everybody else is going to work or coming home from work. So that's the general theme of these sorts of projects. I still, I understand King Street and the concern, it's on the sharp corner there. We're looking to do as much as we can, we're removing the driveway that's on the corner here. We're going to keep the existing driveway that is shared with the marina, because that has to be maintained and easement that serves access for the marina, but we will continue to use that. And then the parking lot over here, we're just putting a new driveway down King Street here for that access. So yes, there are issues with that that we may want to talk about. We have felt comfortable with how this layout proceeds. To the point of, on the parking piece as well, because we're looking at predominantly single occupancy in these units, one car, one unit. I don't remember, honestly, off the top of my head, what the local code is.
One point five.
One point five cars per unit, and we're ninety spaces shown graphically here for seventy-seven units, so, you know, we're one point one, one point two. I've done a lot of projects, certainly in a little bit more urban setting, i.e. Portland and so forth, Bitterford, Westbrook, where we're providing point seven, point seven five, because it just, it's older people who don't drive anymore. Now, it's Oxford, and I understand that may not be quite the dynamic here, an ability for somebody to, they need to have access, and we don't have buses and that sort of thing. So that might be a higher count, but that's generally our experience. To the point of building more, or at least showing, here's how I would routinely handle that sort of question and concern, we're showing ninety. I could graphically put on another twenty more spaces here within this site plan and say, listen, these are future, they're on our plan, we may not build them until we need them, but they'll be on the plan that could be made part of an approval. Done that survey in the past. We're reducing a lot of pavement and building coverage on the property. I think that's a plus, but certainly to the concerns, I hear that. A point that I wanted to make, because I thought it was relevant and I think it's important, I think it's a good thing, the fact that in tearing down some of this building space and reintroducing what I understand was there a hundred years ago or more, connectivity from the bridge in Main Street over to King Street, and so we're going to be making that pedestrian route open to the public, not just to residents, so that is reintroducing what long ago was the ability to kind of walk and back and forth, not doing any vehicular access to the bridge. We're not looking at doing anything with that, you know, so, but people can walk back and forth over the bridge. We think that that's certainly a plus in how the project is laid out. It's trying to fit into the village. We've made the case that, well, it is a village and you do have some degree of services, and it is a good spot for people, but I understand the apprehension on, well, that's eighty, potentially eighty people, for example, now coming into that area. I would be curious, I suppose, back in the heyday, when this was an operational business, how many people worked there? Were there fifty or a hundred? It's a pretty good-sized building, it must have been a pretty good operation. It probably had, I'm guessing fifty people or more. I mean, there were a few people I recall on the board or others that I talked to, that said that they'd worked at the mills, so... But, you know, I still understand that that was a long time ago, and that's not today, so I get that. So that's just more background, hearing the concerns and comments and so forth. We're here to try to talk about those, see if there are better solutions. I'm not sure, I never commit to saying that we're going to get you over the hump if you're in opposition to the project, but we're here to try to at least explain our point of view and what we're trying to accomplish here in a manner that we think is good for the community. I don't know if Suzanne wants to add any more to that, but that whole financial piece that drives the unit count is just that, it's just the numbers. And I can say, here in our state, and I'm guessing that most of you have heard much of the press over the months, years, and, you know, from Augusta, the mantra, we need more housing, we need more housing, certainly true in southern Maine, here in Oxford, points north and so forth, is also true. And it's becoming just harder and harder and harder, and one of the key drivers is the construction costs are just, they're not going down, they're just not going down. And that's a really difficult piece. And so I have found in a number of projects, you know, that my clients have just faced with a never-ending issue here of affordability, and how do we make these particularly affordable housing? Because they're paying a dollar just as somebody building a market-rate unit. And I know we had expressed, for example, and this is to that point, well, if you just stayed with fifty units. Well, if you went with fifty units, they'd probably have to be market-rate units, not affordable housing anymore. And the numbers as they play out, what you would have to charge for a market-rate unit, you had fifty units here, the developer, and this, this is my belief, what facility, if the building hasn't been acquired previously and somebody couldn't make a go of it, you'd have to charge probably twenty-five hundred dollars a month for a unit, which I don't think in Oxford, people are able to spend twenty-five hundred dollars a month for seven hundred square feet. Yeah, downtown Portland, and even those people who were buying that, many of those aren't Miners.
Not everyone is going to be able to qualify to get housing and to rent there. They're going to have to meet a certain wage limit.
That's right, and Suzanne can talk about that more. But the number here on the terms of the rental, I think it's, rough number, eight hundred and fifty dollars a month, I think is the number.
You have to include qualified sixty percent, and that would translate to eight fifty-three a month in terms of rent. Um, just one quick, um, one quick item on what Steve was doing, he did a great job. The remediation and abatement portion of the project is a bit more than one point six million dollars. That is not even factored into the cost of the units. If that was factored into the cost of your unit, we'd be looking at a higher ask for units to meet the main housing total development cost that they accept. So I don't want to go into the reason financing, but essentially, the abatement and denture portion of the project, we're looking to apply for financing under the ownership of the nonprofit, the Caleb Foundation, which are funds and grants and loans that poor profit developers do not have access to. And I think that's probably a big portion why a lot of market-rate developers have shied away from this development, because they just, you know, they just can't access those funds. It would make the rents way too high, as Steve was just saying. And when we worked out the numbers, it looked like twenty-five hundred a month.
You guys have any comment? You should request a public, I think we should do a public hearing.
Well, I was, I was going to request one. I make a motion that we have a public hearing to discuss, just so the public and all the locals can come in and speak their piece.
Does that mean that a letter is put out to all the butters?
That's correct. We have six pages worth of the butters, and I'll work tomorrow and possibly into Monday to try and get those out. The kicker there is that we have to give notice seven days before the meeting, so theoretically, you're looking at sometime in March in order to make that happen. The other kicker is that this room will not be available after March fifth due to some construction, so we're going to end up having to go possibly to the fire station into their bay. I've talked to the fire chief, but it's probably the only path of these residences that we have. The conference room is not going to be available at that time on our normal Thursdays because of other meetings that are going to be meeting there. So we'll have to kind of put our heads together. If you want to do another day other than Thursday, I know for most of you, Thursday was the day, we can do that as well, but sometime, sometime later in March, I think the seventh, is it the seventh? Well, no.
As long as I know ahead of time, I can usually make any day work.
What I was getting to is that it doesn't have to be on a scheduled planning board, you can set it whenever, and because it's not going to be in the same room where a selectman meeting would be meeting, you can do it on that day.
Can I ask a really dumb question?
Nothing's dumb here.
Can we do it on a weekend day, so that maybe...
That is a dumb question.
I was just trying to give people a little bit more opportunity.
I'm sorry, no, 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 actually, in the, in the means of public to, you know, afford them the opportunity to do that, that's probably not a bad idea. Maybe what we probably ought to do, I know because town meeting is scheduled on a Saturday and people are kind of partial to that, I think that's a ten a.m. thing. I'm hoping you don't decide to do that, but...
I think that sounds wonderful.
The other, the other side of it too is if you do a six p.m. meeting, that's also favorable because most people, you know...
Everybody's out of work by that time.
Right. The nine-to-fivers anyway, but, you know, the night workers is what it is, but... That's probably, I think first primary option would be a Thursday, because we're used to doing Thursdays, it's for all the other board members as well. If you want to set a tentative Saturday date too, but we do have to pick one to at least, at least pick, you know, to put it on the notice, so I can send them out to the butters.
First of all, let's take a, let's hear a motion.
Okay, did the motion, I can do it.
Yeah, I think he said...
Okay, now we just have to decide on a date and time.
I think the seventh is the, is the next.
Let's just do it as soon as possible.
I, I, yeah, I mean, I'm good with March seventh.
Okay.
You good with March seventh? This is the Thursday, the March seventh, same time, I'm good with that. Does that give enough time for you to get all this stuff out?
I'll make it, yeah, we just need a week in advance.
March seventh is the same night as the selectman's meeting.
But we don't want to do that?
I don't think you should have it on the same day as the selectman's meeting, because...
That's a good point, because we don't want to, we don't want to miss some of the, okay. How do you guys feel about a Wednesday?
I'm fine with a Wednesday.
So, so possibly a sixth?
I'm good with that.
And at six p.m.?
Can you do that on a different date? I have a selectman's meeting scheduled that night, and I really want to be there.
What worked good for you, Sharon?
Well, the town manager over there right now, so...
She's my boss up there.
Yikes.
What about, uh...
How about the Saturday night? Anybody who wants to do a Saturday?
Saturday, now would it be six p.m.?
I don't think Saturday's a good...
Ten a.m. Yeah, I'm not a big Saturday...
I agree with one member in the audience, Saturday. I'm not a voting member.
I'm not a big Saturday guy myself.
I know in theory it sounds like it, but people really don't come on Saturday. People don't like Saturday meetings, like, yeah, it's our town...
Here, 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 here.
All right, so no Saturdays?
Steve, we never even heard from the applicant. How does any of this sound to you, by the way? You'll probably be the one to show up.
Yeah, no, I'll definitely show up, not a Sunday, but, and Suzanne probably will weigh in more than they, you know. I'll make it work however it works.
What about the thirteenth or fourteenth?
Sorry, Susan, what were you saying?
Whatever works for the town, I mean, I have to come from Massachusetts, so whatever.
Well, aren't you just going to take your helicopter anyway?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so, so what, what are the dates, sorry, the thirteenth?
Thirteenth or the fourteenth? The fourteenth's a board meeting anyway.
The fourteenth is also because you have every single Thursday, so Thursday is off the table, so let's do...
Let's do thirteenth.
Thirteenth?
The fourteenth is our number, yeah.
Right, but because, because, so, so the select, the select board is going to be meeting every single Thursday in March.
Oh, every single Thursday.
Yeah, and so we want to, we want to afford them the opportunity. The thirteenth would work because you don't have the, okay.
So let's play them on thirteenth. You got a day? March thirteenth?
I think so.
All right.
Why not? We're going to have to coax Kathleen into doing it.
She's going with me.
Are you serious? What kind of an appointment is this? That is not an appointment.
I already paid for it.
Well, the secretary is going to be knitting while we're in public hearing, so, uh, March four, thirteenth.
We can find somebody that, somebody to help us out.
Wendy.
I'm going to have to buy her flowers or something. I already, I already owe Kathleen, so, all right. Okay. So you guys have voted that, for that date? Did you vote on the date? But then you've set, but then you've set the date, I don't, I don't...
We're setting the date March thirteenth to...
That's six.
At six p.m. at the fire station.
And it's going to be at the fire, oh wait, we could possibly have it in the conference room.
You're going to have to decide if you're putting it in the paper.
Yeah, it's going to be, yeah, okay, so it's going to be conference room, because they're not, they're not going to be in there that day. I'll have to check with, I'll have to check with Sean, the fire chief, not this Sean. And just to make sure it's open, but I have a feeling it's going to, if not, we'll go right into the bays. We can, if we're going to have a turnout, we're going to need more than fifty chairs.
But conference room and that's the fire station?
All right. All right, so, someone make a motion? Make a motion? Do we have to accept the, or the seventeenth, or do we have to do it officially? Or is it...
Even if we don't have you, might as well just be safe.
All right, I make a motion that we have our, the public hearing, March thirteenth to six p.m. at the fire station.
Yep.
All right, so all in favor?
Who's going to do that, Al?
Al's going to do that. And Sean, you raised your hand, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, it did.
Any more comments, Steve? For the benefit of the public and the board, I will expect to, at this public hearing, give a, another full presentation with boards. We can work out some logistics if overhead projector and slides might be available, maybe more convenient to walk through things, but have heard your comments. We will expect to try to answer those as best we can and give you more information. If there are other things, maybe get funneled through Kingston that come up as comments through the board or from public comment or otherwise, let me know so we can come prepared to the meeting to present as much as we can. We're certainly anxious and hopeful. And I would ask them the fundamental question of, at the public hearing, having gone through that, might there still be the opportunity for an action at that meeting?
Yeah, they, they can leave the public hearing figuratively and come into an actual meeting, and they theoretically could make a decision that night.
That's much appreciated, but we understand that we need to be deliberate here and hear the people and hear our position and try to make context of it all, and hopefully we'll work our way through it.
The extra parking, are you going to put that into the plan? You said there's a potential for extra parking?
I'm thinking that I'm going to do that, yes, I'm going to resubmit an updated plan so that you would have that officially, like, oh, well, how many spaces there are there on this plan? And really categorize them though as, well, this is what we'd like to build part, starting with, and then we have the ability to build more that are on an approved plan.
And if I may too, would it possibly be a good idea for the board to require the traffic study at this stage, so they can get that ball rolling now? Do you want, do you want... Do you want, do you want to force that, is what I'm asking?
I think that's a good idea. We've heard that, we've already heard from the public wants it, so I think it's a good idea, it can't hurt.
So are you talking about him doing it, or somebody else?
They, yeah, you would be requiring it, and of course, of course, if DOT drags their feet, so to say, and they're not able to do it in time, in the past, we've done it as a contingency of an approval, but getting the ball rolling would probably be prudent.
So to that point, if I might, we're not gonna qualify for a DOT permit, the DOT's gonna go, we don't need to look at what you're providing. So this will be more of a local review, it will be done by our traffic engineer, so you have the ability to say, oh, well, we're the traffic engineer, and I get that within our office, so he'll weigh in, do a nice little summary, okay, well, we've looked at various things, we looked at your location, this way you have the traffic on King Street, this is what we project for the ins and outs and so forth, and he'll look at the driveway locations, give you at least a summary as a traffic engineer normally would for a development being, going on a piece of property and how's its access, and what's it going to do relative to traffic conditions in the nearby vicinity. So we'll put that together.
So we'll go with that, right?
I'd say I'll make a motion that we get a traffic study done also.
Yeah, more specifically, from their group.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you have to reference what, where it comes from.
Just a traffic study.
All right, so. All right, well, to cover all our bases, we can close out our order of business. And we're done with public comments?
Unless there is any more public comment.
So I don't know, close the meeting.
Make a motion and we end the meeting.
Why don't you end it? All right, thank you. Second? You second it?
Yeah.
All in favor? All right.
That's probably more accurate. All right, Susan, sorry, my camera wasn't working tonight.